Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Little Falls Planning Board Meeting of July 27, 2023. This meeting is taking the place of our August meeting during because of conflicts. So we'll begin. Kevin, will you lead us to the bike salute?
My honor.
I'd like to lead this to the flag, United States of America and to the Republic of which is since one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Valerie, would you please read the statement of public notice?
The Little Falls County Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, July 27, 2023, called to order. Please take notice that after notice of this meeting, provided in accordance with N J S A ten four four dash ten as follows. An notice of the meeting was promptly posted on the goal to board at the school building located at two twenty five Main Street, Little Falls, New York. Copy of the notes was sent via email to the North Jersey Herald News and filed in the Office of the Townspeople. Please note that this meeting is being taken, therefore we ask that you speak loud and clearly to the microphones.
Thank you, Valerie. Please call the rolls.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Carrion.
Mr. Luke Damiello.
Here.
Mr. Caldo.
Here.
Mayor Ganz.
Here.
Councilman Sova. Mr. Seaver. Mr. Derek Damiello. Mr. Coaches.
Dr. Raffi.
Present.
Mr. Wade. Mr. Brigliadaro.
Here.
Mr. Koldarts.
Here.
Mr. Siobhan. Mr. Kim.
Here. Thank you. Are there any comments from councilmen?
Chairman, there was no one that came before the governing body at the last meeting concerning the planning board.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for the approval minutes of the meeting of July 6, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Valerie?
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Luke Damiello?
Yes.
Mr. Caldo?
Yes.
Mayor Ganz?
Yes.
Dr. Raffi?
Yes.
Mr. Kim.
Yes, Minister approved. Memorializing resolution for Jay Pappas Realty LLC. In case everybody isn't aware, I'd like to thank Board Member Luke Damiello for making a catch on it and correction. Very well done. Good eyes. Thank you very much. The correction is the bedroom on your third floor is a two-bedroom and not a one-bedroom. Did we already make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Valerie?
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Luke Damiello?
Yes.
Mr. Caldo?
Yes.
Dr. Raffi?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, the resolution is approved. Onto the application for the manner at Little Falls LLC and S and S at Main Street LLC. One fifteen minutes.
Chairman, just before Mr. Scrivo addresses the board, just a couple things. Since we changed our regularly scheduled meeting from next week to tonight, we did publish notice in the burden record and in the Herald News of tonight's meeting, so that was done. I have this newspaper flipping. And in addition to that, Mr. Scrivo provided me with the affidavit of publication, which I have reviewed. Everything is complete and in conformance with the municipal law, so the board does have jurisdiction to proceed with this application.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. As Mr. Brigliadaro said, my name is Tom Scrivo, representing the applicant this evening. And the principal, the applicant, who many of you know, who's working in town already, is Kenny Mecca. He will be here shortly. He's had a death in his family and is attending service, but will is on his way. This applicant application seeks to seeks amended preliminary and final site plan approval to add a newly proposed three-story mixed-use building in the Little Falls Central Business District, properties located in the Transit Village CBD overlay zone. And as this board is probably aware, previously on September 22, 2021, the board approved the applicant's request to construct fifty-six residential units and approximately forty-seven hundred square feet of street-level commercial retail space. The applet- this application seeks to add an additional twelve residential units and approximately fifteen hundred square feet of commercial retail space. In total, the application would result in sixty-eight units, approximately six thousand two hundred square feet of street-level retail space. Parking structure has already been reviewed by this board, but to reiterate, it's a two-story structure with upper and lower levels. And in connection with this application, the applicant is relying on the previously approved C variance relief to allow access on Center Ave, as it will remain the quote "front yard" for purposes of the application, because it's the longest frontage and the two architectural tower features and other C variances that were described by the witnesses in the first application. Tonight, and again, this is really to round out what is fairly old properties that would be to come in line with the application that was approved by this board. Really round out the the frontage on Main Street features for the new construction. You'll hear from our engineer, architect, Mr. Corso, engineer, Mr. McClellan, planner, Mr. Styles. And if the board wishes from a traffic engineer as well. And if there are no other questions, we would call Steve Corso, the architect for, as our first witness.
Please call.
Applicant calls Steve Corso.
Corso, please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give before this court is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please tell its name and spell your last name for the record.
Stephen Corso, Stephen with a V, C O R S O.
Thank you. And proceed, Mr. Chair.
Yes. We don't have to swear. I mean, you swore before.
No, I just swore.
Okay, I missed that.
Very good. Of course, so you're a registered architect from the state of New Jersey?
I am.
Prudential are valid as you appear before this court.
Yes.
And your licenses are current?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Mr. Corso, could you please describe for the board the current application, current existence, maybe start with existing conditions? And then to the proposed.
Yes, you go up to this and when I'm holding, you can see the existing buildings on the side. Both of the head to, and this is the rendering previously approved, they're in, we plan to remove these structures. And extending.
This chair, if I may. The board can see the exhibits, but I don't think they're visible to the members of the public. Are they able to see that?
And we're going to add similar structure that we designed before, in place of any particular building. There's can existing design, I'm not willing to answer the ballot, because they're right there. Then the symmetry from left, Mr. Inglis, the line. And now we've got symmetry towards the middle, then the balance on each side. And then, as we know, the footboard reset in our footprint base. And then comes out where the bank is, the element of the street, and then it's reset to the left, giving it variety.
If you just hold point that way towards the doors and just hold their permo so people can see it. Camera, mayor, the cameras that worked?
In the middle.
It's in the middle. I see it. Very good. Thank you. That's good. That's good.
There was also a suggestion to enhance the design even more, and I believe that a series of awnings above the retail space, maybe deep blue or burgundy, will be very nice, and maybe a nice commercial feeling.
The applicant would be willing to.
Consider enhancements?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Corso, could you describe the interior?
Yes, we're expanding the parking, existing parking structure at both levels. So one level would be low and brief. And in the second floor, the other level, we add three, was a little bit of a bridge and network for connecting in the back. And we have eight car spaces in each level, here in the proper nature from the parking area. And on the grade level, we have the retail, the dining room, the front, and then just from employees from down the police department, those. And you can see this portion here, they re-add what we've planned for that, and the ground level is here. And then the rest is what we did previously, they had the bank, the maintenance room, we have the main retail space in the middle, with the elevator and stairway, and then beyond that, where the existing apartment below, people ran, and we get to the third and bathroom floor. Go down the second floor. This is the vision here, and what we're doing is we're opening slightly, keep the unit at the connection, both in the back and the front, and we're extending the existing corridor around. So it had a good flow of circulation, and we can use the same elevator and stairways, the whole of the building, there is. And connecting between the connection, we just been going, there's there are two courts.
Where were they connected?
The connections between the addition and the existing building, the courts, right, right, here, between the two corridors. And across that court, we have the car that extends around, connect to the existing part. There was a question by the planner about accessing courts, we can be, provide access from that part that connects the two on each court, that's, that's not an issue.
The courts are only for internal use by the residents.
Actually, they're only provided here, the residents will not be eating them, they're just.
Right now. Okay.
And it will maintain by the man. We're at a six-month-old apartments. We've, we've adjusted, I would say, the problem on each side, where the connection is there. Each one bedroom apartment has a living room, open, a kitchen open to a living room dining room combination. And we have office space. And one bed, and they have washing fires in the units, maybe stainless steel appliances, countertops, barber tools, we love doing parks. It's the same floor plan on the second floor, and on the third floor, except that floor we have, the H T R wall is a little different. Because that floor we have the dormers, we turn set into man's start roof, which, which actually keeps the building from being much feeling, this whole, that is. So we have the base, the middle, and the desk, it's like the apartment in the. And we're just continuing that same.
I think with the enhancements, it will finish off the building nicely.
That's the addition. We look at the other view that we're building, cemetery, it's the same, it's existing, it's like the on the opposite side, we can see the kitchen here, it's even the same thing that on that side, that's what we are in front, like you showed us, man. And then the rest of the elevations are just ahead of the food.
Thank you, Mr. Corso. We have nothing further for Mr. Corso.
Are there any questions? Any board members? Yes. Finally, I don't know, the architect's the right person. How many existing apartments are there already?
Fifty-six.
Not in the, in the addition that you're doing now above the stores.
There, you mean in the existing buildings?
Right.
I'm. Yeah. It was.
All right. Why didn't you swear, Mr. Mecca, and maybe call?
We can either swear you in, or you can whisper to your third.
I can make the representation. There are six, there are two commercial spaces and six.
Existing.
Existing apartments.
Okay, thank you.
Are they one-bedroom apartments?
As I said.
Or, or, for one bedroom, two, two.
It's two really. Four. Before. So that's eight bedrooms.
Were any of those units affordable units now?
Well, section eight.
I think the.
Technically, I think they would qualify as affordable, but they're section eight. So it'd be a whole relocation plan that would occur with this, but
Will you?
It would apply as a.
Are you going to appear before the special master? I think our planner made reference to special master. Have you met with him already?
Have not met with him yet. We have met, well, that's untrue. We have met with him with the, the application that was approved back in September of twenty twenty-one. We met with him several times, and he's preparing a report and recommendation to the court with respect to that. And there's been, that's been an iterative, ongoing process with respect to township, township's overall need and what the recommendations and special master are.
Thank you.
We're regular communication with the special.
Any additional questions?
Can I follow up on, is there any dedicated parking for the current units that are there? Do they park on the street? Or is there a lot today? Currently parking for those six units, do you know?
Yeah, there, there's no parking. Existing parking for the that area, the, the, the area that's going to be demolished as part of this application. There's, there's no parking for those units.
Just so existing.
But there will be parking for those units in the proposed.
Yeah, yeah, and you'll hear probably the engineer and traffic engineer instead of how it meets your ordinance requirements.
Very good, thank you.
The expanded garage area will be tied into the existing garage area.
Yes.
Are we going to lose any parking spaces from the existing to create a ramp to get to the new park?
Yes. Few on each level.
What's the net gain?
The net gain is.
So, well, the net gain is twelve. Okay. And going back to the courtyard on, on the, I guess, the second floor. You said residents are not going to have access to it, but it's described as a landscaped courtyard. Maintenance, I presume we're going to go in there and.
Yeah, we, we maintain by the man.
Right, and there's operable windows surrounding it, right?
Yes.
So I guess people are going to have to keep their windows locked because somebody could jump out one window and jump in another's.
That's possible, but that would be their discretion if they were within the normal, in the apartment, you wouldn't know. I would assume not going to, but, but yeah.
Right. The, the access door will be otherwise locked, so residents won't get to it. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Barry, your question was with respect to the number of additional units, correct?
No, it was about parking spaces.
The way I see it is there's eight parking spots on each level. So it'd be a total gain of sixteen spaces. Is that not correct?
That's right.
But we had to remove a few parking spaces to gain access to the new part.
Understood, okay. Yeah, so it's a, it's a net twelve. Great.
I'm glad we clarified that. Good to hear. Any other questions?
I have, yeah, I have a question. Piggybacking off of Mr. Barry's comment about the open courtyard. Where do they access it? Because from what I see, unless I'm missing it, and my apologies, I had. It all looks like apartments.
Yeah, it's actually, it's sort of, it doesn't show on the plan yet. And we can burn a meeting, we could write a door, this is the car that connects the division with the existing project. There's, there's a lot of wall, but we can directly report during, from that car that we have a door.
It's guarded.
Thank you. And my next question was, you had mentioned that you're going to put awnings across. At what level are you putting the awnings? First or second or both?
Just about the least.
Just.
It'll give us more of a speech capability.
And is there any consideration to adding anything to make it a little more aesthetically pleasing? Maybe a little bit of a stone wall or anything to break up the existing straight across break?
Well, the awnings were part of that, and yes, we can do designs in the brickwork. On any of the areas that are larger expanses of brick, and that will.
Will that include Center Avenue also? Because the side, the side exit, that's, that's a very long facade.
Yeah. We have different, there's a section here that assess, and this goes back, and then there's two seconds here that is divided. And then we add a triple solid course to brick along the main hall's awful.
I guess my question is, would the applicant consider using something other than brick to make the decorative feature?
You can add some stone, yes.
Can we make it contingent upon the municipal planner's approval?
Yeah, or engineer, whichever.
Or, or engineer, whoever on the, you know, municipal township professional approval?
Yes.
We add that to the resolution. We add that for the.
Yes, yes. Just going back to the parking. It indicates that the, there was no basement in the, in the retail, in the existing building, says that it's unexcavated below the retail. So there was no basement there.
It was a very small basement. What's left of that, if we build in, and these rest are unexcavated, but it was very.
Is the retail going to have any storage area? It's a plan. Within the unit, so. And they're ten by fifteen?
Well, there are seven hundred and eighty-four.
There is an area next to it that's labeled basement for retail and for landlord. Is that going to be broken up to the retail as the, as basement storage maybe?
I think it's for the existing unit.
We'll look over some storage area for the retail.
Yes.
Okay, so be able to walk in the garage, make a right, you know, these pile boxes or whatever. Inventory.
Two retail spaces are plenty and plenty of seating wise.
One of the questions posed by the planner was, would the applicant consider, because of the size of these retail establishments, if somebody needed the fifteen hundred square feet, is it possible, is this wall in the center structural? Or can it be removed to allow fifteen hundred square feet of, of retail?
It's not structural, and I'm sure the.
Again, just depending on what use is there at the time.
Very good. Any other questions of the board? I'm going to open up the meeting to the public after each presenter for this one. So may I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public for the architects?
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is now open to the public. Anyone wishing to address the asked questions of the architect, please come forward. No one coming forward. I close to me. Come on. Hello.
Hello. Sir, please raise your right hand. You swear from testimony you're about to give before this court. It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Please tell us your name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Sean May, last name May, I mean Y, twenty-four Center Ave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've heard one witness tonight, Mr. Corso, so at this moment, we're looking for you to ask questions of Mr. Corso.
I mean, see that you've added the extra IDA and stuff, please.
Yes.
When, how does the place in the back working over here? What is applied and how?
The engineer, the actual, what do we have, so what do you want?
The other question I had is more of a site plan issue during construction and how we're going about it. For site security, which has been fairly atrocious of ours. How are you going to sense in this area and protect the public?
I have a question for the architect. Who is that before?
Site security and how you protect the public from Main Street.
Well, you could have sworn him in.
I think we're going to have.
The engineer will answer.
Right, okay.
I thought that we were looking at possible options of approving the looks aside with the materials, because I tell you, living right next to it, it's really, really poor. There's no movement on the backside and wall, or something just straight, very brick wall. And living in my backyard is a, there's a lot of echo now that never used to be there. I'm getting, it's very loud now, it used to be very quiet. Currently, the landscape plan shows very short trees, which really do nothing. We need something taller to protect, and sorry, it's softened that better. I think that would be very helpful for everything. I know that every sound just bounces off it and just reverberates.
That's a very good suggestion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The other one is sort of this personal thing, and when can I get my damages called prepared? Fence, I had a fence damage from, they were throwing out garbage from the top roof, and it bounced and damaged, but fence. And also I have a two-by-four that went through my yard and too late, last day shattered, so.
Oh, I will address this with Mr. May, if you're still around here. Take care.
Summertime, I'm gonna like use my back. Those are the basic questions I had. I just was not sure about the up and down graphic, how it was going to work. As far as, here, it seems like a lot of coordination, track going around, landing, and stuff, and used to.
Yeah, we have a good distance to the engine, you will be.
And we just look a little. I guess it would be sort of, I, I can hear you. When you're building, how do you operate, when you, when you, residential, when you build this out, and it's a synergy, or, 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 kind of, and it's for the degress, I would handle.
Well, the Florida wasn't the, the, the car that exists now, would be, would be the left, and next, when they're ready to get, you know, the financing over, before they occupy it, not go. Yeah, this part of, right down the corner. So we, we reran the unit from the yesterday, and around this, and then we ran this, and it's.
Can you trans the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Hear you.
I was, I was asking about the corner here, and how it was during construction, now it would be occupied.
Okay.
It didn't make sense, but now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board? No one from the public coming forward. I close to me the public.
Next witness, the applicant will call, will be Patrick McClellan, engineer.
He's raised right hand. You swear threatening.
He's raised right in. Do you swear in front of the testimony that you're about to give before the court is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
With the record, just tell us your name, spell your last name and give us your business.
Sure. My name is Patrick McClellan, M C C L E L L A N. My firm is M C B Engineering Associates. We're located at eleven further F U R L E R Street.
And you are a licensed professional engineer?
I am. And my license is still permanent. I have had the budget of testifying before this award and possibly your other awards around the state of the year.
Still good since Monday night when you testified before Woodland Park. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. McClellan, could you please explain for the board the existing conditions and the proposed cell development from an engineering standpoint?
Sure. The, the previous application, which was for lots five, nine, nine oh one and eleven. Was known as the Main Street and ten dash twelve Orange Street. That property was six thirty six thousand ninety five square feet we had. We had a total of fifty six one bedroom residential units. We have three thousand three hundred and sixty four square feet of four space for that event. We had our eleven hundred square feet of retail space. Parking, we had ninety four parking spaces proposed, seven bicycle parking spaces proposed. And we are now adding one additional lot to the application, which is lot three. Size of that lot's approximately five hundred five thousand one hundred fifty square feet. And on that property, we're proposing to add to the building, as you've heard so far, twelve one bedroom units, bringing the whole from fifty seven with a sixty gauge. The total lot area with consolidated with the new property is forty one thousand two hundred and forty seven square feet. And the resulting application again is now sixty eight residential units, all one bedroom. We are not proposing any changes to the value bank footprint that still remains three thousand three hundred and sixty four square feet. This addition supposes an additional fifteen hundred square feet of retail space now totaling phases twenty six hundred square feet. Parking required for this application is a hundred five spaces and we are proposing a hundred and five spaces. We also require three additional bicycle spaces. We had seven prior. We have ten now. We've consolidated them to be in one location on the new, on the new plan. And again, the, the total square footage is forty one thousand two hundred and forty seven square feet.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan. Could you, providing that overview, could you go, perhaps start with the parking area? Explain how that it's existing approved plans to the present.
So. For the record, I'm referring to Chief Ray of thirteen. It was through a site dimension plan coupled up. This is Spain growing that new submitted no modifications. It has a date of seven, ten, twenty twenty three. And this reflects the upper parking level of the project. Again, from the, from the original approval, lot street is not part of it. So what we're doing now, again, we're adding, we're clearing out the buildings. We have two levels of parking. This would be the upper level. Each of those areas for parking, we're going to have eight, nine by eighteen parking spaces in it. And as was, as stuff earlier, you know, we initially didn't get sixteen extra spaces, but we had to remove two spaces in the, in the previously approved area for the purpose of gaining access to the space. So each level has eight new ones minus two, so six and six with twelve additional parking spaces. Also, what we've done is in previous application, we testified the bicycle parking elsewhere. But now the, the addition creates a nice area for ten bicycle. And the intention is to use these, the U, the U loop locking station. We've got a length of approximately twenty feet long, so that we put ten bikes front again for folks that would be, would be believing to use that. So we have also want to point out that we are proposing the building to be just about five feet off the sideline. Yeah, we're trying to hold consistent. I did see a comment in the planner's letter concerned about an alleyway created to buildings and recommending that the building be extended to the property line. We consult with our client, just want to let the board know that we have.
We don't like that. Well, then even though it's way in the future.
It was a good, it was a good problem.
Will you have an access door to that area? Or will it be a solid wall? You don't, you can get it from. Yeah, but somebody's got to mow the lawn and things like that. I think the drawings indicate lawn.
Well. And if you're, oh, you're referring to this, this.
Yeah.
There would have to be access to that.
I'm saying, from the rear.
Can you point to the E V parking space?
I cannot, but it can be like, we, we purposefully don't spot an eating space on there. We are declaring that we need one, but actually for my calculation, we should be required to, we have twelve new spaces. Then once more, and again, we would, I'll flash code, we're going to comply with that. So let's talk for that. What we, what we are asked for is to leave it flexible, because we're learning that it's not just a matter of convenience to where they should be from a layout perspective. The fire department usually wants to say it in a safety perspective. So if we have to commit tonight, we can select four spaces, but if the board is available, we like opportunity to talk to your professionals and then find the location through that conversation.
Very good. I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Mr. McClellan, how about the lower level?
A little bit like deja vu, very similar. This is for thirteen and located in seven, ten, twenty twenty three. The same plan that we've submitted, no changes. And again, just mirroring what's happening above. We have the same thing happening below. We have seven, eight parking spaces delineated. We need to remove two spaces so that we may access into that area. And again, both of these areas are intended to be for residential. So.
Great. And could you please describe for the board the building height and calculation, how you get to?
Service. The, as I'm sure you're aware, the, the order to take a look at the perimeter of the building. Before sixteen, we made some elevations without calculating average. From there, the measure from that average elevation to the man, in this case, the man's group. By coordinates, I think this building holds up thirty three point eight.
Mr. Cobolars, you agree?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And Mr. McClellan, could you please describe for the board the proposed drainage and utility?
Certainly. Also, not very exciting on this thing, because the addition is going to be serviced internally from the, from the previous approvals. So sanitary sewer connection is going to continue for the same, staying around, just what have you done by plumbing. Something new additional connected to the existing building, same with water service connection. So we don't need the apply for additional road openings in order to make additional connections. As far as the storm grade is concerned, the, as far as the state regulations, N V A C seven four eight. This project falls under the threshold of major development. The disturbance area is under an apron and we are actually reducing slightly the impervious cover. So two things happen. One is we, we are not required by state regulations for stormwater management, which as of last Monday, you know, I'm challenging. But, but secondly, we're actually having a positive benefit on storm or runoff for two weeks. One, a slight reduction of impervious means of the slight reduction of runoff. And two, we're taking an area where you look at the whole site, there are a lot of vehicles being parked on pavement and the state in Jersey become very mindful that that's not a good thing for water bottom. We have a hundred percent of the parking for this job sheltered by the buildings inside, which brings up the runoff from this property. And that runoff will be collected by the roof drains and went down through the internal plumbing and will connect to a detention basin that we are proposing, so on this edge of the building. And again, the reason we're proposing that detention basin was a factor of previous application. Despite the fact that we were reducing the runoff by simply reducing impervious cover. Say kind of ask for some help with their drainage system in Center Street. So through discussions with the state, kind of, we added some detention pipe underground. The health slogan, what are going out to the session? And we'll have to file an amendment to this application of accounting. If they have any follow up comments or questions, we will be complying with that as well.
Okay, are we following the engineer report? Are we following the engineer report?
Mr. Mr. McClellan's engineer report?
No, ours.
We were going to do a wrap up with his report. To make sure that.
If we're hitting and missing, that's why I'm asking.
We're gonna, we're gonna go through, after he does his, we're gonna go through the commentary from the board engineer. All right, Mr. McClellan, any testify for the board, lighting and landscaping?
Certainly. The, the lighting plan that was included in the set. Again, it's, it's an expansion of what was previously approved, that being as this the building is the large center coverage. The lighting is limited to the ceiling mounted lights in the garage areas with changed purposes. What we've done is take the same fixture that we were using throughout the previous application. And by our calculation, we will need to have four more fixtures on each level, so that we can provide the adequate safety lighting to both parking levels. With regard to landscaping, again, you're, we're bringing forward the same landscape plan that we had previously. The only change really is that we're proposing some vegetation along property line, which unfortunately will get lost now because that in the alleyway. And that's where the building will, again, we're accepting to extend the building to the property line. We won't be able to install those. But other than that, it's the same landscape plan as the previous application.
And just in connection with the previous application, is it fair to say that there are no further variances sought in this application beyond what was previously approved by the board in the first application?
That is true.
And have you had an opportunity to review the board engineer's comments and review letter of July twenty five, twenty twenty three?
I have.
And are there any issues that the board engineer raised that you have not addressed, seeing that we can address people?
Your engineer was kind of, was sending some time to me yesterday, so we actually had a chance to go through the letter together. And we talked about each of the items. We have no objection to testify and satisfy each of those items to your engineer satisfaction. There's very straightforward and simple comments. We have no objection.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan. I have no further questions of the engineer.
Mr. Cobolars, any responses or questions to the engineer's presentation?
Any, again, any thing that's changed due to this proposal is minor in nature traffic from a traffic perspective. Water, sewer usage and drainage perspective. As the engineer indicated, they need to go back to the county since they did originally require the underground drainage detention basin. So I don't see, unless the board has any specific questions or clarifications, is there an agreement with complying with my comments? I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the board, carbon?
Delivery to the retail stores that you're proposing, would that be done through Center Street into the garage? Or deliveries on Main Street through those stores?
The, the, during the last application, those questions came up. There is an area reserved for deliveries in the parking area and that is also available to the retail stores.
Thank you.
If I may, the streetscape that is currently in front of the building, if there's any damage or issues that are that occurred during the work, is that going to be repaired and restored?
It will there. And also, just to reiterate one of the comments from your engineer's letter. We will be privy to your streetscape on that from the.
And it will continue that the streetscape will be performed by the property owner all the way down the rest of Maine and all the way up Center Ave where the property exists. Perfect.
Chairman, there was a question from the public about safety. Was that directed towards the engineer? I'm not sure who would answer that question.
With you, the applicant has us, you're doing the project management, we oversee the construction, so.
Mr. May asked about having additional planning, anything you can do to cut down on the echo sound?
Think that the, on the streetscape will, will help because there'll be some, some additional landscaping and you can be mindful with the tree selections with that, because frankly, that's something that wasn't that wasn't crossing our mind before, but now that we know that it's an issue. We'll look at that from a landscape perspective. We also can talk to the architect as, was terrified about looking at maybe, maybe some changes or some adaptation. For the design, the pasture, things that we think are potentially also maybe the best of sound.
But the, the applicant would have no objection to looking at different landscaping options to, to minimize that bouncing off sound.
On the, on the Warren Street side of the building, I think is where the concern is. Can we add some additional, maybe larger trees than were previously proposed there to, to address that?
Definitely.
I have a question. With the residents' interest in mind, and I did speak with a lot of them when, when I saw this plan, actually, it's two parts questions. One is, and I don't know if it's from engineer or architect or the owner, the applicant. What is the possibility of keeping the six units? I believe it said there are already six units in that instead of going to twelve? And the other concern that we have as, as residents is can we keep the same layout? Instead of going three story, I believe, keep the same layout that it's already existing, having two, having the retail on the bottom and then going one level up instead of two levels up.
I think that would probably be a question for the architect or the planner with respect to the, the aesthetic nature of that. The application is, is to continue those two floors above retail for continuity, streetscape and appeal purposes for frontage. But I think that probably would be a question for the architect. As it relates, I don't know that I understood your first question with respect to maintaining the first, the, the existing six.
I believe there are six units right now. Is this, so what are the possibilities of keeping the six units instead of going to twelve units?
Meaning not, meaning not only keeping it at six.
Exactly.
A project is, you know, from a financial standpoint, the, the project does not work with that number, and so that would not be feasible.
Okay.
There's no questions aboard, anyone?
I have a question. On page nine of engineer's plans, could you just explain this terminology that says convert existing trash enclosure to a refuse room? So what, what is the difference?
Well, this, and we're referring to right, right here in the middle.
Yeah.
My understanding is, I believe that was the terminology that we had on previous application. Now we use this as a centralized application, we prefer refuse collections and bring the refuse there. We prefer refuse collections and bring the revenue there. And then that uh, kind of contractor can remove it from the site at that one location instead of instead of having to go around the building. So we we can all listen to about clear uh, lines and how on the plan now.
May I have a motion to open up meetings to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I. Meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing the engineer. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come. We've been waiting for you, Mister May.
There's my name again. Sean May.
Right, you don't have to, you don't have to be sworn in again, but when you just come up, you just have to state your name, that's all.
Sean May, twenty four Center Ave.
You don't even have to tell us your address.
All right.
Just so the record identifies that you were, that you're a speaker here.
Uh, you mentioned in your speaking that you were inducing the previous. Uh, area on plan. If you take, if you're now extending those in all the way out as you're planning inside here. Now, you're sitting down, you're getting rid of this. Doesn't block, reading out becomes almost hundred percent of the building.
That that will have an impact.
And now it's now like thirty percent maybe, it's got a lot of green areas.
So. Overbuilds. Uh, I I don't know about that, but but what I can tell you is, you know, we came in prepared, but I was planning to submit it. We had spiders, I don't know if we're covered that, uh, we will, what if there was a this and I mean, if that needs to be mitigated, we will mitigate that. And and though we could still under that, we can still fall under the threshold of major development. So if we do anything there, we'll be maybe increasing the size of the driveway over here. Uh, and she connecting the, again, neither of her, he connected from the search, it's again, anyway, maybe that may that will there. But that's something that we.
Yeah. Yeah, well, so I'm not sure if there's some calculations, but it's a little lower garage, it's a little way out here, so which that's really impervious. So I was just wondering if that was considered in your numbers, because it seems like.
Well, it's it's considered in in the fact that we're not doing um, we're not part of the groundwork, we are consequences, the land stays in here. That that was when it's completed, that will help to uh, evaporate things far again.
Uh, last question I have is about the trash. That's something you read during the game, whatever that is. Um, how many containers that fit down here now? Sixty some odd units, do that people run trash out.
That I that I would have super, what they, I've been made out the operations of it, so is that? The uh, because of the pride of borders, if the if it requires the one pickup, we the pre pickup, the. The uh, I imagine you can make those decisions on a five, like if you want that, it gets a little bit overburned.
Maybe. We just.
You get another, neither do the tasks here, no question about it. You're doing that.
That's my only question.
Thank you.
I believe there was one comment that the planner um, had made in the report number seven, that I think the engineer should probably address um, rather than our planner. If Mister McClellan, you, uh, have you reviewed the planner's report specifically item number seven? If you could just describe for the board what the planner said and what the applicant people wants to do?
Yes. Uh, planner points out comment number seven that uh, that the site indicates. The width of the entrance to the proposed parking area of each base to be twenty point one seven feet. Yeah, referring to with the mention of this width and like right up to the eight spaces. The planner, they go on to advise that by ordinance, if. If there, if that driveway is serving all spaces or less, the requirement is rate twelve foot dry line. And the fourth day is going to be a low impact area and then focal wide aisle would be enough. Uh, or beyond those parking space, depending on the required twenty four foot uh, wide dry line, so that it'll be short two way track. We have eight spaces here, so by ordinance, uh, we exceed the requirement by day fee. But also just to bring the worst elements of that is twenty foot wide aisle can accommodate two way traffic anyways. Well, even if it does come to a point where uh, like there's behind with someone coming in, someone is coming out. Uh, that's that width can accommodate two way traffic.
I have a question, with the five feet. Proximate bump out of the building to avoid an alleyway being created. Do you accommodate parking on both sides of that area in the garage? Where you may be able to gain several additional spots? The thought being, I I don't know if it would be as wide as the rear section of that building there. Again, I it's hard to tell with the, you know, small plan if it would, but if it's possible. And the width would accommodate parking on both sides. Would we consider adding additional spots in there just to? Surely increase, you know, provide adequate parking to to residents.
And and it it does look like that there would be some some parallel spaces in there, wouldn't be perpendicular. But uh, we could get two or three parallel plates on each level and we would be not gonna add those, maybe they, it looks like they would.
Great.
So I just have one question, I don't know if the engineer, the architect wants to answer it. And you know, you probably say this already, the member of the board stated it to me. How are you going to address going to zero lot line on the side yard? Are you building a wall? Are you expanding the apartments?
To actually build zero line. The um, this, it's that, that lot experience with building zero lot on the end, there was a disruption. You know, it's one option is to get a temporary construction, you could the neighbors while. Uh, but there's also that it's just struck from your side on the interior. Uh, forces you to make some changes in structural details, but it can be done.
I'm not sure that answers my question. Uh, so you're saying there are choices or you're not sure which one you're gonna choose yet?
Again, this is the first, we thought of the zero setback was tonight, so we didn't have a chance to really. Prefer on that, but I know from my experience with this developer that he has uh, he has the ability. Uh, build a zero law.
Very good, thank you. Any additional questions from the public?
Well. Uh, my my only comment about that on a zero lot line is the second and third floor apartment spacing that that's that side. Um, have windows and presumably the next door neighbor is gonna come by and he might wanna build. Three story building on a zero lot line as well, so. What, how how are these apartments gonna get air and light?
Actually, the architect does have to make some considerations for that elevation because because of being a zero lot lot. So that's something that uh, gonna get a, not an architect, so I don't know the specifics, but I do know that it's gotta work that out uh, with the heading of that in mind.
Could the upper stories stay be set back?
Exactly.
A couple of feet? Where the.
Just just nod your head up and down.
Where the first story?
Sounds like yes.
Is built to a zero lot line from an inch.
That works.
That's, that's really the best.
Yes, we're in favor of that. You would like to see the five foot separation, uh, second and third.
Of course.
Thank you. Um, and he does, uh, first of all, any other members of the public? No one coming forward, I closed the meeting to the public for the engineer. Any additional questions to the board? Okay, with that, continue.
Thank you, Mister Chair, we would uh, call traffic engineer Joseph Steiger.
You swear from testimony about you before this board is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Tell us your name, spell your last name.
Joseph Steiger, S T A I G A R.
And your license, you are an expert in traffic engineering, your licenses are valid as you appear before this board tonight, correct?
That's correct.
Testified before this board.
Exactly.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mister Steiger, you uh, conducted a study of the site and surrounding areas. Yes, um, I did the original traffic report for the uh, the group project of fifty six units plus the retail plus the smaller bank. And uh, when you compare what you had there, there was a large bank of over six thousand square feet, so there was. Employees, offices and whatever financial um, uh, activity was going on in the bank. Uh, it's being, that bank has been reduced to about three thousand uh, square, I think, well, three thousand square, thirty five hundred actually done. Thirty five hundred square feet for the bank, so it's being being reduced. The net result of what you had previously to what the group project was. Was a diminution of trip generation, a lot of lower trips. And in that traffic report that I compared in November of two thousand and twenty one, um, that was a reduction of forty one morning trips, peak hour trips. And sixty nine P M. Of of trips, of peak hour trips. Peak hours are the typical rush hours between seven and nine A M. or to six P M. So the morning peak hour, reduction reduction of forty uh, one trips and in the P M. peak hour, sixty nine trips reduction. What's being proposed are added here to twelve units and fifteen hundred square feet of retail. The trip generation of peak hour trip generation of that development, the magnitude of development, four or five trips per hour. So you can see we're still well below what was the previous, uh, well, the previous preexisting. Of the development of the site with the larger thing, the six units that are that were there. Um, we're still well, well below the uh, the uh, amount of traffic that was generating. So this project plus improved project generates less traffic than it's again, was traffic than what was there before. Um, site layout work handed hand with site engineer, the architect to establish a safe and efficient uh, traffic flow on the site. And parking, uh, unique parking departments of the ordinance. Um, and it's a well, a well designed and saving emission layout that will operate at. Thanks, like, one, one other point I'll put up, I'll follow you, is that we need to do a level service uh, for the driveway. And we're at level service A, which is just as grade school A to F, we're in that upper range of of well. Good level service, and again, with the additional four or five trips, we'll continue at level service A. Thank you, Mister Steiger, no further questions.
Any questions aboard or traffic engineer?
Other question, I'm sorry. Um, I'm sorry, Mister Steiger, I I just wanna make sure I understood this correctly. So you said that when the bank was there, there was actually more traffic?
Yes.
Than when you've reduced it?
Yes, because it was a six thousand square foot bank.
Right.
And it's being reduced thirty five.
Okay, still I don't understand why it it was less traffic.
Because the bank of that size, well, again, what we use in order to establish.
Mm hmm.
Trip generation is the instituted transportation engineers trip rates. So when you fly those trip rates to the six thousand square foot bank plus the six units.
Hmm.
And compare it to the thirty five hundred plus the fifty six units and you had eleven hundred square feet of retail. The the net result is forty one trips less in the morning peak hour, sixty nine P M. peak hour. So it's generating traffic up here, then what's being proposed is down here.
Right, now you are adding. I'm sorry.
Twelve units plus.
Plus, plus, so. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, that's, that's an increase of about four to five trips per hour during the peak hours. So again, forty one less, sixty nine less, so additional four or five trips is still going to have a reduction in traffic.
Thank you.
Any other questions aboard? Uh, may I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Those opposed? Meeting is open up to the public for the purpose of addressing the traffic engineer.
Hello.
Get closer.
He's right again, you swear from the testimony, you're about to give before this board is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Tell us your name, spell your last name and give us your address.
Joseph Anderson, A N D R S O N, eleven Center Ave.
That's.
Just had a question for Mister Snyder, so. So the unit, the building has has sixty eight apartments. One bedroom, four retail spaces. And you're saying it's gonna have less traffic.
Too small detail space, one eleven hundred square feet and fifteen hundred square.
Okay, so previous, there's the bank. All right, here's the bigger. And no residential spaces. On that. No, you're talking about the other lot. The additional lot. Additional lot, add two retail spaces, six apartments. So going from four retail, sorry, three retail spaces total, and the whole encompassing of. The bank?
Yeah.
And two retail spaces, six apartments, to sixty eight apartments, four retail spaces, and there's gonna be less traffic.
I I don't, I'm not following your, your position of what you had before.
Yes, what was their performance on the total in all properties, so being discussed there. There was the bank, six thousand square feet, but the two other retail spaces and the six apartments above those two retail spaces, the new proposed additional. And how's the total and the in the parking lot? It's gonna be sixty eight, one bedroom apartments. And four retail spaces, including the reduced bank. And there's gonna be less traffic.
Yes.
Okay.
And and the main, main reason that that bank, six thousand square feet, for the major trip generator. Um, at six thousand square feet, there's no pattern series of towers, you know, four or five towers of people bank. Uh, there had to be by order, could be potential six thousand square feet of having offices, mortgage, uh, department, financial advisors and so forth. And you know, you wanna fill that space up, you don't wanna pay rent and not use it. So it had at least the potential, I don't know how it operated, but that depends potential generated significant amount of traffic. When we apply the trip generation rates to six thousand square feet and then compare it to thirty five hundred square feet, you see that it's almost half.
In your, in your, uh, your formula comes from the U S. Department of Transportation.
Well, it's to the transportation engineer, which is a, which is not a government agency, it's a professional uh, organization. But it's used by the B O T, it's used by the Federal Highway Administration, I'm sure your township engineer has used it as well.
Okay.
And so it's, it's a whole, so whole island. In the.
I see, but thank you for answering my question, but I just wanna make a statement that. That situation, this, I'm sure it follows the formula exactly, but the situation just defies plausible.
Yeah, and and I understand that you, you, you don't look at it, it's hard to. As a layperson, you know, in Spanish at home, but yes, it doesn't seem like it makes sense. But as implied, those trip generation rates, it does, the, I guess, the comfort zone that has, that you have a good level of service. Being that to get in and out of the site and in the roadways and generally operating, good level of service, being that additional. Now, additional four to five trips per hour, that's one every.
We're talking about sixty eight, no, not residential unit, compared to six residential unit.
This application here today involves the twelve units plus the eighteen hundred square feet. So again, what we're looking at is the fifty six units plus thirty five hundred square foot bank. Plus the retail, compared to the twelve additional minutes and the. So we're looking, we're looking at what was improved previously by Florida, which was under construction. To what will, what's being proposed, either all units and.
Well, I live on Center Ave. Right outside of where the entrance and exit are gonna be, so. Hopefully you are correct, but I doubt, I'm expecting to see increased traffic on the street, but. Let's see.
Four or five trips, that's what we're talking about in this application.
Four or five trips.
Per hour.
Per hour. With sixty eight residential apartments compared to cities that were previous there.
This fifty six are already approved, so that's what I'm basing on, comparing, you're comparing, I think, apples, oranges, uncomparably. What was it due to, about, to what's being proposed here tonight? It's being proposed here tonight, twelve additional units and fifteen hundred square feet. Okay, all right, when I look at it, you're take the whole project, the sixty eight units, yeah, it's gonna be much more traffic than four or five trips per hour. But that's not what's before the sport, the sport is, we're here for approved, addition twelve units and it's a non-stripped unit.
Okay, that is all, thank you.
Thank you, Mister. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Chairman, if I may.
You may.
I agree with.
Are there any other members of the public? Why don't we wait to the?
You just have to tell us from your.
Sure, man. Uh just one other question for you. Is there any concern about the traffic coming out and making a left on Main Street?
Correct.
Without, I mean, with the amount of traffic accuracy coming out of this building, overall, complex wide. It's you, you have potential for a lot of risk. Part of trying to make that left turn.
Well, we did, we tracked, as on central, um you have school and during the, I'll say fifteen minutes from school. Arrivals in the market, you do see a lot of activity. And during that time period, there might be a little bit of a body of getting out. Now, safety is usually put with sufficient cycles since, which is the big safety aspect of being able to make a left turn or a right turn. Uh but what we did, we ran the analysis for the peak hour, the hour of the real level service A. I'm out of that right, making left and end right. So we have good level service.
I believe I did see in the application for the do not block, do not block box. When, Mr. Damiana, when do you think that would be happening as far as when does that take place?
Yeah, so that's a great question. I can certainly answer it. It was something I was going to actually address here and I just took a note on. Uh the, the contract for the, the quotes from the striper were already received. There's going to be, it's six, don't block the box added along Main Street, much like Montclair Ave has had. Uh at the intersection of Main and Center. Uh it should be, the work should be performed, the P O was already cut, so the work should be performed. In the relatively near future, I think that'll make a tremendous difference, much like we've seen right here at Montclair and Main, where.
No, that's.
Accessibility has been greatly improved, that visual impact of the don't block the box, I think makes the world of difference for people. Uh I, I noticed it in Woodland Park near the car wash and this one here in Montclair Ave. And it's noticeably different that people are not as much log jammed as they are um when these stripes are there. So it should be, again, within the next few weeks, I hope, depending on the striper, the P O has already been cut.
Any other members of the public? Mr. Steiger, you just take a. Thank you.
You swear from the testimony you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please tell us your name, spell your last name and give us your address.
Katia Anderson, A N D E R S O N. And I don't have the expertise that you have with the traffic study. But I do stare out the window of Eleventh Center Avenue all the time, even prior to the pandemic. And I can tell you that even despite the construction. There's been a tremendous increase in traffic, people blocking the driveway. I've called the police several times on them. And I do find it a little hard to believe that with all those units. There will be less traffic. And I remember your statement from the meeting um about whatever fifty four units or whatnot. And I specifically remember you saying that it will actually reduce the traffic of the town. And I just found that logic so preposterous.
Well, the comparison of what had there previously, the larger bank, to what's being proposed is production. Like any fifty six units cannot remove traffic, less traffic, I don't think I said that, but I said what you had currently versus what you will have to build in production.
Well, I do know beforehand, again, from just staring out the window during the day, because I work from home. That people just came and went from the bank, but nothing the way the traffic has been lately. Granted, there's been a great increase of traffic everywhere post pandemic. Um but whatever that block the boxes, please do it because. People don't know how to drive or how to park, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Uh no other members of the public coming forward? I close the meeting for the public.
Chairman.
Yes.
If I may have a couple of comments, because I will say I do. Agree in part as a, certainly a layperson when it comes to parking with Mr. and Ms. Anderson. Um that a bank that's providing the same service with a smaller footprint. Is not going to see a huge reduction in the number of vehicles, but to that point. We've just heard that there's been an increase in traffic in that area. Uh over the past little bit of time, um you know, kind of unrelated to. The building and we know it's unrelated to the building because there's zero occupants in the building currently, other than the bank, which was already existing. Um there is a good level of service there. Um I will say that the increase in traffic also is not related to. The Abbey being constructed because post the Abbey being constructed, which was fifty units, twenty five two bedroom and twenty five three bedroom units. There were zero issues with increases in traffic on Center Ave. Um that has, again, with two and three bedrooms, a lot of units with two, three and more vehicles uh in them there. Um so to that point, I think between the good level of service that the building will provide with the access to it. Um I, I just don't see, I, I, I do see an increase in vehicles, but not so substantial that it will have any impact. And I think the don't block the box that is hopefully being painted in the next week or two. Will have, will make a critical difference in people being able to exit Center Ave. Just as it has Montclair Ave here, just as it has alleviated traffic on Main Street for people making the left. Uh onto Montclair Ave. So I, I do think it will make a big difference. I don't think that, again, the, the twelve total units, six additional units will have any substantial impact um from the prior application.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board members?
Uh I have a question for Mr. Steiger. Uh when, when you're developing your calculations for traffic. You, you take into consideration the fact that there's a bus stop directly in front of the development. And there's a train station within a half mile.
Yes.
It's walking distance, so presumably some people who choose to live there are not going to drive every day and.
One, one of the, and it's great, there's the availability of mass transit, which has a depression of of trip, uh trip generation. But as we all know, that this post pandemic has created a means like people working at home. So these, these fifty six units plus the twelve units. A significant amount of those people are not going to be the nine to five uh type of worker, day in and day out. That they'll use mass transit, they do commute, uh but they'll most likely be working at home in many cases, not all of them obviously. But again, the pre and post pandemic is that we've learned how to work at home. And um and and many people do that, or they're very flexible, they don't have to leave at eight o'clock or nine o'clock, they can maybe leave at ten o'clock or. Twelve o'clock to stop in the office and pick up the papers and stuff and then back again. So a lot more flexibility and make people.
Thank you.
You are.
Um. I have one final question for the developer. And that is, um is parking space going to be uh available to a tenant automatically? Or will there be an extra fee? Is it a rental situation for a parking spot?
Why don't we just, why don't we just swear a minute?
There you go.
I really want to draw, draw, you really want to hear from him, I guess. I think our traffic.
Okay.
He's had enough experience with the developer. Yeah, and I, I've worked with Mr. Becca, and what we typically do at his developments and I did some post instruction checks. Is that we, that's made one parking space per unit. Evidently, most people, most units have at least one car. Um and then the remainder, so fifty six of, uh sixty eight of the parking spaces will have, will be reserved for a resident.
Yes.
Um whatever's left over will be utilized maybe for guests, but also someone with a two cars, that there is never the uh. Uh a unit or two or three that have two cars.
Very good. So you assign parking for each apartment.
Yes, so unit one, space number one and so.
Got it, got it.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Yeah.
I'll call the planner, uh Mr. Jeff Styles.
You swear from the testimony you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, tell us your name, spell your last name.
Jeffrey Styles, S T I L E S. I'm a licensed planner in New Jersey, I testified before all the boards, including my license is valid.
Your valid.
Okay.
Took away all my questions. Your acceptance, credentials are accepted.
Uh be, this will be brief, Mr. Chairman. Uh Mr. Styles, did you have an opportunity to review the application with an eye towards whether there were any variants called for on this application in addition to. Uh any previous ones that have been granted? Yes, I've got the opportunity to look at the plans, I reviewed the planner's report, as noted in the planner's report, we are not requesting any additional variances. Uh we are, what we had in the original application. She did make note about the park of the E V parking spaces, which I think was cleared up, we are going to propose the four as requested, so that was the only variant, so she pointed out, should have continued that. I just.
I had the opportunity to point out that you have an excess of parking spaces.
Yes, we do have excess parking spaces, we meet all the height requirements and the number of units consistent with the ordinance, so we don't require any variances as a result of this application. I haven't used it. Respectively, it's affordable housing unit set aside, Mr. Steiger, what is the applicant proposal? Yeah, we'll continue to meet with the special master and come to an agreement as special master of the township about how the affordable unit requirements are met. But it is a full commitment by the developers to meet that requirement. Thank you, Mr. Styles.
Quick question, um you say you don't need any variance, I thought, because nine by eighteen parking space area.
Yes, and that variance was already granted, and we're just continuing that through their structure as, as an existing condition, so. Um we, we, the plan did not, we gave it a break that that variance wasn't required, but if that's always not required, it's already there. It's already been granted by. But if the board, if the board sees that that variance is, that's uh. We can. Yeah, and again, it's within the structure, so it is normally, it's not inconsistent to have smaller parking spaces when you're structured parking. Uh particularly in this type of usage, we heard. Uh spaces are going to be assigned at least one per units, people are familiar with the facility. Um that's being that they're using, and it does, the nine by eighteen is a pretty consistent parking space of stall size that we see.
I'm not arguing the point about the nine by eighteen, I just thought we would have to make a motion for variance for nine by eighteen. Why don't we, Rich, why don't we add the variance for the nine by eighteen parking?
It'd be safe, we can do it. What does R S I S typically require for parking spaces?
It's bigger than that, but it's not a stress structure parking, that's one of the challenges that the industry has, is that this shared parking, does it now?
My understanding of R S I S is that they. For consumer parking, or residential parking is nine by eighteen. It's not. I don't, I don't.
R S I S nine by eighteen.
Thank you. We don't need. Rich, do you think we need a variance? I don't think we need a variance. It's the state of New Jersey, R S I S. The twenty by continuation, yes. Continuation, the twenty by ten is our ordinance, nobody else. It's our ordinance, so you need a variance.
Well, the, the issue is whether you need to restate that you've previously given the variance, because the, this board has already approved that variance on the nine by eighteen spots. If you wish to do so, we have no objection.
And it's carried over to the new spaces, that's all. I think we can do it that way.
It's an expansion of an existing structure. I don't see why a new variance would be needed.
Can I ask a question? If it was ten by twenties. And it's eight spaces. An extra foot, yeah, I mean, you're going to, you would have, if there were two spots. That were not able to be created on the current plan. Under the fourteen additional spots that are being provided, and it was only twelve that were being provided, would you still meet the parking?
Yeah, with the E V credits, the, the after, it would still be.
So by requiring ten by twenties, all we do is limit parking, it would still be completely. Okay.
Where are?
No further questions.
Thank you. At this time, may I have a, do you want to come back up? May I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public for any question?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
I close. Any member of the public wishing to ask questions of the planner, please approach us. No members of the public coming forward, I close the meeting.
Right.
So Chairman, that concludes the witnesses' testimony and we would simply um. Rather simple um application to uh. For an amended site plan to add these twelve units and additional retail space and based on the testimony. That there are no variances required, we would request that the board approve the application.
Very good. Any questions of uh? The applicants? Rich, did you have any comments? You spoke with the planner before the meeting.
I, I did, Mr. Chairman, our planner was not available tonight, but I did speak with her in the context of. Uh if she had anything else to add in regard to the report that she issued. And she indicated that she was satisfied with the application, and she just asked that the applicant. Uh address her general comment number seven, which is the one. Uh where it indicates, the site plan indicates that the width of the entrance to the proposed parking area containing eight parking spaces is twenty. Twenty one, seven feet, testimony should be provided, indicating measures that are being taken to ensure that this width will not increase the chance of a conflict between vehicles. Mr. McCall, want to address that?
Yes, he did.
So I think that covers everything. She was satisfied with her review of the plans.
Okay, do you have any additional comments or recommendations for us?
Well, I'd like to quickly go through what I've written down as possible conditions. Of a favorable uh vote on this tonight. So one has to do with the series of warnings above the commercial space for facade enhancement. Another one is uh the applicant, as was done in the pre prior application. The applicant will continue to work with the special master to address uh affordable housing. Uh the applicant will put designs in the brick. In the brickwork for enhancement of the facade. In order to break it up, and that would be subject to review and approval of the board planner. Uh the applicant's going to install four, make ready the parking spaces, but the precise location. Will be subject to the review and approval of the board professionals and fire official. Uh the applicant is going to provide. Uh ex- extend the streetscape along Main Street and Center, along the property frontage. Uh the applicant would, will work with uh our board planner to. Uh add some additional landscaping and trees in the, along Warren. And uh. I guess we, we talked about a five foot step back for the upper level apartments. On the new.
We talked about a wall going up for the first floor, but a five foot separation for the second and third.
Right, second and third was the two residential floors step back.
Yep. My understanding was that we were expanding the first floor to the lot line.
Yes.
And the second floor and the third floor, we're going to have a five, approximate five foot setback.
I think it's going to be notch. The architect could explain that, I think it might be helpful, because it's not just a complete setback just for architectural purposes, does that make, if the chairman want to hear?
Yeah, I would.
Yes, let's bring.
Well, we typically do. Um probably like the start when there are buckets on that side. So a step back with windows. Uh so, so you come back as the first apartment, there'll be a step back. And then some of the bedrooms, you have a window this way instead of facing the property line, the private section. And then every so often you have it staying directly three, two or three step backs. So that all of the rooms, like one room is the back, one room is the front, and then the other rooms are around the wall, you have to face the court, so that. And then the other rooms are around the wall, you have to face the court, so that area where the windows are, they're a five foot step.
Just where the windows are or the outside wall?
So we'll come along the profit line and then we had a window that would come in, but almost like this court, and then come out again. So the windows will face this indentation.
How far is the setback for the window?
Well, this indentation goes, it's probably going to be about, it's not going to have the six feet together, good side window there. And your distance between them to reset it to the way the plan works out is usually able to empty. There's a minimum dimension for a court, I mean, six feet.
All right, you made reference that Mr. Mecca has completed many of these.
Yes, yes.
Very well. Any other?
Yes.
Any other questions in the board? Any questions aboard in the overall application?
Am I correct, there are no variants needed then this evening?
Right, right, okay.
That's the opinion of the chairman.
May I have a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion, uh, that we accept the applicant's, uh, application with, uh, with respect to all the conditions that were, uh, mentioned, uh, this evening.
Can I just clarify that the condition for the aesthetics being approved by the planner and engineer were, was mentioned?
Yes.
Okay.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Valerie, please pull the board.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Caddo?
Yes.
Mayor Gagnano?
Yes. Yes.
Miss Abby?
No.
Mr. Keston?
Chairman of the board, yes.
I've got a question, why was I bypassed?
That's okay.
Chairman of the board, yes, the application is approved. Was a policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, continuing business, uh, is there any old business coming for the board? Um, we had some technical difficulties with the taping of our first meeting. Where we taped fine, but we did not know how to get it onto the township website, but that's corrected, so this meeting should be on a day or two. Uh, any new business? No bill, motion for a German.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
They all in favor?
I.